Check, check. All right, folks, if we can get situated. I do, I am showing a time of 1:00 P.M. As it was noticed before we took a break for our lunch. So, welcome back. It is 1:00 P.M. And we left off on a public comment, with public comments still open. So if anybody wishes to speak, you may do so now. Be sure to stay your first and last name for the record. And there's also a sign-in sheet at the podium. We forgot to mention that earlier. If you did speak today and you hadn't signed yet, we can pass that sheet around later, or...
Pass it around now.
Yeah, we can pass it around now, thank you. So that being said, public comment is still open. If there is anyone that wishes to speak, you can do so now, and you'll be given three minutes.
I would just like to inform the planning commission of the words of the former head of this body. And that is that Middletown is being sold out to the Chinese. Right? This is not trivial, and it's from someone in a position of great expertise on the subject. Please, please, vote against the Middletown residential project. It can easily be placed elsewhere. It can be placed on the project site. It can be placed closer to high-density population areas like Hidden Valley. It does not belong in historic, small, single-family home-centered town like Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And ma'am, did you happen to... Oh, I believe the signing sheet is getting passed around.
And I just wanted to add that this is not low-income housing. This is housing specifically for the workers of this project. It does not, no one else in Middletown is going to be able to use that housing. Only the workers. So if they're a worker, maybe they can use it. But otherwise, they're not going to be able to use it. This is not, and should not be represented as low-income housing, or housing to house the population of Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room? No hands in the Zoom room? Are there any other hands here in the chambers that wishes to speak before we close public input? All right, seeing none, we'll be closing public input and bringing it back to the commission. Are there any more questions to the applicants?
I just have a wonderment here. We're in the midst of redoing our entire county general plan and all the local plans. So I'm wondering, has this particular project been discussed or run through the Middletown Local Area Plan Group?
Thank you. This project is a realization of a special study area in the 2010 Middletown Local Area Plan. The objectives for this special study area are to retain and expand agricultural uses and promote agricultural products and agricultural tourism. And future development should be high-quality and low-impact planned development that includes mixed uses complementary to agricultural operations in the Gwinoc Valley. So this is, this is actually a realization of what the community had planned back then. During our meetings with the Middletown Local Area Plan Advisory Committee, there was no encouragement or movement on that group's effort to change this special study area.
I didn't know anything about... Okay, then, my other wonderment was, and I don't understand how this works. The Gwinoc Valley District that's going to be formed, is that correct? So say what the parameters of use are, or use within the parameters of this special district. What does that mean?
The Gwinoc Valley District would be a zoning district overlay that would encompass the project area. It would do design and development standards similar to the existing ones that we have in our zoning ordinance already that dictate minimum parcel size, maximum height of structures, setbacks, things like that. So the design, the Article 14 Gwinoc Valley District is named such because it is, it would be a new article within our zoning ordinance that would be specific to that overlay area.
So are there specific rules, restrictions, allowances within this kind of a district that are already in place? Or are they something that has developed after the district is enacted?
They are already in place. They're in the documents before you. They refer frequently to the specific plan of development, which does cover some design elements. But it also has the addition, or inclusion of setbacks for the properties, maximum height for the structures, which would be 40 feet. And a number of different design and development elements are included in that. But it is in existence. It is one of the documents before you. I'm not sure which attachment it is.
Best of mystery. I saw it referenced, but I didn't see the criteria or the parameters within it.
Yeah, it's in Article 14, or the proposed new Article 14.
Article 14, thank you.
I just had a comment. So the resort residential units and residential estates were categorized or intended for fair market value and will ultimately serve as secondary homes, or second or third homes for whoever purchases, purchases them. Meaning that the residential units will not always, for the most part, be full-time or occupied year-round. And we see that pattern in houses or properties that are along the shores of Clear Lake, which for the most part, I mean, they're empty. I see that quite a bit. So I guess the comment is more towards how we were speaking about evacuations. What is the actual full capacity expected? I mean, we don't know when, when a fire might break out, when an emergency might happen, and if it's like a busy holiday where, you know, you're at maximum capacity, or the majority of the people are there. And what that would look like in terms of response and evacuation routes. So one of the comments that I have been kind of drafting this, this statement as we were going through, and I'm hearing all the comments from the public. The primary reason that we're here today is to review the environmental impact report, which was returned due to concerns related to the fire risk assessment. While upgrading emergency, while upgrading emergency connector routes is a step in the right direction. It only goes so far, especially when we consider the worst-case scenarios where multiple communities may need to evacuate simultaneously. The reality is that many of the roads throughout Lake County are single-lane, or at best two-lane highways. This raises a serious question. How can we effectively prepare as a county for the increasing threat of wildfires? Perhaps there are other counties that are currently better equipped to support an investment of this scale. At present, Lake County does not have large concentration of industrial facilities that provide local employment. As a result, many residents commute out of the county for work. Our local economy depends heavily on tourism, wineries, fishing, and other recreation. And other recreation are the cornerstones of economic activity here. This poses the project as a, as the potential to not only attract tourism dollars, but also retain our local workforce and stimulate long-term economic growth. Still, before any decision can be made, we must take into account the impact on the community. There are valid arguments on both sides, and our responsibility is to find a balanced path forward. Listening to the voices of the public, residents, and the property owners is essential. From the record, it appears that dialogue has been ongoing between all stakeholders, which is encouraging. This project could be a tremendous asset for Lake County, but only if it's supported by the proper infrastructure. Not just today, but for the future developments as well. In many ways, this project serves as a test, as a test cause for how we approach growth and development moving forward. We must weigh environmental, social, and economic factors with future generations in mind. Development will bring change to the land, to the wildlife, and to the people who live here. Those changes can be both positive and negative, but by working together, we can shape a vision that respects the character of our community while allowing us to evolve in a thoughtful and responsible way. So that's just kind of what I've been drafting throughout and listening to everyone, and how we're speaking and how we're approaching this, this, this project. But it is the main thing that I'm seeing, that the problem is not necessarily the project itself, but our infrastructure in Lake County. So how can we build the roads to allow for this capacity so that it is not a problem for, for this project and for any future projects that come forward? So I think evaluating our infrastructure as it is now, and how we're going to plan to, you know, widen the roads, how many more, how much wider we have to make the roads, two lanes, three lanes? Especially for keeping in mind emergency situations. And there was a few members of the public here that expressed that concern that they're survivors of the fires that happened. And they were firsthand, you know, there, seeing how slow the response was. Everyone's trying to get out at the same time. And we have to keep that in mind, because that is a situation that people were, they were in it, and they lived through that. So that's just kind of the, what I've been gathering today. And it is a lot of documents that we have to read, and a lot of things that we have to take into consideration. And at the time, as it is right now, I can't make a, I can't vote on it as it is until we have a little bit more time to think about it and assess how we're going to move forward.
Chair Chavez, if I may assist you with your concerns. We currently have the climate adaptation plan, which addresses the impacts wildfire included. We also are updating our health and safety element, part of which includes a county-wide evacuation plan. And so, parallel to today's project, as we go through that Lake County 2050 update, we are addressing and creating policies, objectives, and implementation plans to address emergency evacuation countywide. Your concerns sort of echo the concerns of the Attorney General when he joined the lawsuits about this project back in 2020. And that is the whole reason specific to this project, that they then went through years of changes in design, changes in road standards. Detailed analysis with the transportation experts. And it was based on that, then, that redesigned this project. Based on that reasoning, the Attorney General withdrew his lawsuit. So your concerns have definitely been heard over the past three years, not just specific to this project, which has been addressed, but also the ongoing consideration, analysis, and development of alternatives and priorities to address it countywide.
That makes sense, and thank you for that as well.
I'd like to second Commissioner Chavez's articulate comments. I'm very concerned about the infrastructure, but it sounds like there are some things in progress. I need to see those before I can vote on this as well. Maybe they're somewhere in this enormous package.
Are you saying you need to see the county-wide evacuation plan?
Yes.
That's in progress right now, as part of the Lake County 2050 update. It's not final.
All right, what I'm saying is that what I've seen so far doesn't satisfy me, unless there's some more routes out and greater road structure. I mean, we're hearing from people who were here during the fire that it was inadequate. So I need to see something that addresses, excuse me. And while we're on the topic, I've been thinking about what we saw during some of the fires. We saw airplanes and helicopters dipping water out of lakes. To me, remembering those scenes, I cannot imagine using planes and helicopters for evacuation. I think that's, that's not something that I can contemplate. I think we need to talk about the numbers and the roads. We're talking about four to 6,000 people with one road out, one currently accessible road out. If there's a fire coming from the Middletown area, I'm just not seeing it yet. So what I'm saying is, it sounds like this project is a really great project, but I need those, I need to be able to see that that's going to work. The only thing I would add to your comments is that over our lunch break, I was thinking about the preservation of farmland. And if you merely trade with another location, you're not preserving it. You're just moving the, what do you call it? Not zoning, but you're just moving the lines. You're not, you're still destroying farmland if you put homes and other structures on prime soils. You're taking it out of commission. So I would like to, it would make me feel a lot better if we could somehow see that avoided. If, and I need to take a closer look at the maps. There's a lot of material here. But, you know, if a golf course is going on prime soils... But, you know, if a golf course is going on prime soils, that might be reasonable. But building structures that completely change forever the land, I just can't accept that. And those are my only three things, really, the wildfire evacuation routes, the routes themselves, and the preservation of farmland. Of course, I assume what you said is correct about the other infrastructure needs, that the county is going to address that on its own.
Yes, that's not part of this project. So, just so I understand, because we do have the applicant's team here that could go into much more detail regarding the studies that were done and the changes of the project to address transportation, we can go ahead and do that today.
That'd be great.
Excellent. Then I will defer to the applicant's team.
So if I can add before we move on, is I think, you know, what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners and kind of seeing it's all kind of glazed over is, this project is huge. And of course, we have a number of Middletown folks here. I'm going to throw out two, you know, because, again, I'll say that when Lisa Kaplan stood up here and talked about the fire, I was part of that also. I didn't lose my home, but, you know, when it takes you back, and we all deal with trauma differently and stuff, but it does take you back, you know, as far as when you're driving through the flames, you know, I don't know how many people that were in this room before, you know, just went through evacuations in this county. But, you know, when you're actually, you know, have fifteen seconds to leave your home and you're driving through flames and you've got the car next to you burning and stuff, you think about these things, and so they weigh really, really heavy on you. And so for better or for worse, you know, it could be, it could just be a timing thing. Again, this is like the tenth, we're approaching the tenth-year anniversary of the Valley Fire, which was at that time, you know, the state's third-largest fire, and very, very devastating to this particular, to this county, you know, and then followed by many other fires. So, you know, having said that, you know, there's, you know, there's some emotion, you know, that you do kind of have to get into then separating out that emotion to then being able to make a land use decision moving forward. But to the other point is that this project, as I disclosed earlier for myself, I've been quite involved with this project and not even as involved as maybe I should have been, but I've been involved with this project for quite a number of years. I believe that some of my fellow commissioners here have not had that opportunity or been quite that involved, and I got to tell you, the onslaught of papers, of materials that we have to click through and read is quite overwhelming. And I know for even myself, when I first received the packet on Friday evening at 5:00 PM, again, you know, having some experience with this project already under my belt, I still, for a moment, you know, felt totally overwhelmed, how am I going to get through this? So with that, I think, you know, I know that I felt better as I started reading through the materials and feeling more comfortable with it. But, you know, perhaps, I think what I'm hearing is that some of us may need a little bit more time to dive in a little bit deeper. This is a huge project for Lake County. It has impacts, you know, as we've heard from many people here today, it has huge economic impacts, huge benefits, as well as, you know, there are some issues. And I think, you know, I think we're all very responsible commissioners up here that we want to make sure what we approve in moving forward is in fact in the best interest of the Middletown area, but also of Lake County as a whole, and work out any kinks that we can before making that decision. But in the meantime, yes, I agree that we should probably move forward and continue the discussion today while we're all here, and then see where we end in an hour or two.
So I just want to also acknowledge, I appreciate all the input from fellow commissioners and the public. I appreciate the staff time that it took to get all these documents available. I have to disclose, I wasn't able to read everything, and that doesn't sit well with me on a project of this scale. I think for myself, I'm hearing economic development and health and safety are the main issues for myself. And I feel like since we've experienced this tremendous traumas for a lot of people within the last ten years, I myself was evacuated from the sulfur fire in 2018, there's always the question of fire safety. And even with the best plan in place, that doesn't mean everybody's going to follow that plan. When you have those type of experiences, people are not thinking. And I've witnessed that, that people are not thinking clearly on how to evacuate. Being in a situation where our roads are congested, our roads are not developed for the use and the amount of members in our community, those are the things that I worry about. And when I'm talking about health and safety, those are the issues. And as I think about relatives of mine who, every fire we've experienced in Lake County, I have somebody connected to it, a family member, a relative, community member I know, and the stories I've heard over the last ten years are traumatic. I personally know a half a dozen people are still receiving treatment from anxiety as a result of those fires, who are suffering with mental health issues because of those fires. And to not consider that as a part of what we need to decide here is, I think, would be misappropriated for us to not consider that, that there are people in our community still dealing with mental health issues regarding the fires. And so, moving forward, how do we create a plan? And again, I got to commend our staff with the amount of work that it took to get this in front of us, but there's still always questions and concerns. And so that's kind of where I feel like I'm at. I'm not at a position right now to make a decision based off of myself not reading everything, but I'm leaning towards, again, looking to move this down at another date, time certain, so that we can take a deeper dive. I would also like to make a site visit. I wasn't given the opportunity, or maybe I was. I just got back from three weeks of vacation. So again, I looked at this information Tuesday and was not able to get through everything in the detail that I would like. So I would like to take further steps in making an opportunity to go and see the site in person, and maybe those will help alleviate some of my concerns. And it'll help me to better orient myself to the plans that are in place, the evacuation plans, look at the roads, and it'll give me a better opportunity to make a better-informed decision. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Chair Chavez, I count three in the request. So if you like, I'd be happy to go over alternate dates and times that are available in the board chambers at your convenience whenever I'm ready.
That sounds fine. We can do it towards the end of the. We did have the applicants here, and there were some questions about transportation. So if we had a representative that would like to answer those questions, or I think we have somebody coming up to the podium as well?
Hello, this is Rob Hodl from Coblen's Pat, sorry, Coblen's Pat Duffy and Bass again, representing the applicants. I just wanted to address at least some of the comments that were, or concerns that were raised. And one is about the number of escape routes, and there's actually three different exit points from the property. So the new Grange Road connector, just in case there's any confusion, I'm not sure if there is, but it's a, it's a third emergency egress route, so it would direct some of the traffic up to Grange, or allow traffic to go up to Grange Road, as well as to leave on the other two exit points onto Butts Canyon Road, which were already part of the project before the Grange Road connector was added. And then also just wanted to mention that the evacuation, community evacuation analysis, which is Appendix H1 to the draft partially revised EIR, it did take very conservative assumptions about both the occupancy of the project itself, so that it was essentially fully occupied, as well as the community around it. And I can, you know, in that report, there's some more information, but I can kind of highlight a few of those conservative assumptions right now, which is that they assumed that the evacuation order would be near rush hour, 4:00 PM, on a Friday in August, which would be kind of the height of the season for the resort. All homes are occupied for both the community nearby, as well as the project populations, that a hundred percent of the residents for both the community population groups and project population groups actually evacuate, which can be an issue with people ignoring evacuation orders. But this was just, let's assume the maximum number of cars on the road, and that eighty percent of employees, a hundred percent, eighty percent of employees in the community and a hundred percent of employees for the project groups are at their place of employment. So it kind of double assumes that people in the community are both at their homes and their places of employment, to just not miss anybody. It really maximized the analysis. And then it assumed eighty-five percent hotel occupancy, which was for, in hotels in the community outside of the project, and a hundred percent hotel occupancy within the project. So very conservative analyses, and even with those, it found that with mitigation measures in place, the impacts on evacuation, on the community's ability to evacuation would be less insignificant. So it's a robust community evacuation analysis, and, you know, while we would hope that a decision can be made today, certainly would encourage the members of the commission, if there is a continuance, to take a look at that Appendix H1 and the assumptions that went into it and conclusions, because it's about as robust a analysis of this type of impact as probably has ever been done in the state, and concludes that there are less insignificant impacts. So, thank you. Happy to answer any questions while I'm up here that I can.
Remind us of the mitigation measures? Remind us of what they are? You just said with the mitigation measurements in place.
Yeah, there, I, I'm going to miss a few here because they're fairly exhaustive, but they're a lot about updating the evacuation plans and coordinating with the various agencies that handle evacuations to update the evacuation plans to accommodate this traffic. There are regulations on where, depending upon the direction of traffic, where cars will be, exiting the project will be routed, so that most cars, for example, in most evacuations, unless it's impossible to go south, most of the cars exiting would be directed to go south on Butts Canyon Road and away from the Middletown area to prevent congestion upstream for the community evacuating north and northwest of the project site. There are traffic improvements, including a traffic roundabout that was in this last round. It was part of the original project and then expanded to be, actually, a two-lane roundabout to kind of, to help cars move through more quickly, and there are various signal improvements.
And where is that, that roundabout with the two lanes? Is that at the junction of Highway 29 and Butts?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, but it's all, it's both in that H1 traffic report, and then obviously, the draft P R E R sets out those mitigation measures in full, as does the mitigation and monitoring reporting plan that's in both the draft and final P R E Rs.
And this is part of the Phase One?
This is, there are mitigation measures for, those are the Phase One that I'm talking to, but there are additional measures for Phase Two, which include the requirement for additional studies of evacuation at that time, which would take into account conditions that have happened at that time, and a requirement that either future phases be reduced in size or additional traffic improvements that are proven to be sufficient to reduce the traffic are there to avoid creating additional delays of, I believe it's over half an hour of additional delay from the full build-out, but it may be, it might be slightly off on the timing that's built into that mitigation measure. But there's basically a standard that needs to be met through future studies of full build-out beyond Phase One to ensure that those phases are either are mitigated for or are sized to avoid creating problematic evacuation impacts.
And do you know anything about Grange Road and the improvements that are scheduled?
It's scheduled to be improved for up to fire safety standards, and that's all been analyzed as part of the P R E R, the paving of that to make sure that, and the construction work to make sure that that would be possible, and that deasement has been agreed to with the adjacent property owner that it would travel through. So it's essentially, you know, ready to be implemented if this project's approved.
So how wide will that paved road be, the Grange exit?
That, I don't recall offhand.
It should be forty-two ninety standard.
Okay. And so that's two lanes, four lanes?
No, no, Grange Road is two, I mean.
Yeah, I believe it would be two lanes, but to current fire, to current state requirements for fire roads.
And Butts Canyon Road, there are, just to be clear, there are no plans to improve Butts Canyon Road, except for the roundabout.
I believe that's true, that it was infeasible to widen Butts Canyon Road, but there are signal improvements, as well as, and I would have to do a little digging to get you the particular details on those, but they are in the document. But there are signal improvements and other, some improvements, but there's no ability to really widen that road.
And will the improvements to the Grange Road be done prior to initiation of construction?
It would be prior to the first certificate of occupancy, I believe is how it's.
So not during construction necessarily?
It would be constructed, not before the other construction, but during, but before anybody could move into any units.
Concurrent.
Yeah, so it'd be concurrent with the other construction.
Since we're on that topic of, we mentioned full build-out and the phases that were, that are going to happen for this project to be completely operational, what would that timeframe look like?
I think the Phase One is contemplated to be through about ten years. So this would be in the kind of the ten to twenty, twenty-five-year timeframe.
So Phase One is expected within the next ten years?
Phase One is expected within the next ten years, but it's expected to take, you know, the bulk of those ten years, most likely, to get fully built out.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if you're the one who answers it, but with the Santa Clara Housing, when is, assuming that's approved, when is the initiation of that? Would that be prior to, if they're going to be your worker bees, when is that going to be initiated?
Yeah, that'll defer to somebody else on our project applicant team. I don't know the answer to that, but it is part of Phase One.
Thank you.
Public input is closed.
I just have a question.
I can't take that at the moment.
We're talking with the applicants right now.
Can't, all right. We had a question for the applicant.
With the Santa Clara Housing Project, first question is, is there a reason why it's not located, co-located on the property for which those workers will be employed?
Yes, first of all, my name's Kevin Case, and I'm one of the development partners with Mahamon Development. And obviously, it's, we've been working on this project since 2016. I'll answer your question. I've invited each of you out to, multiple times through emails, to come to the property. I've gone through your supervisors and so forth, having a couple of you have come out, and I appreciate that, because it does give you a different perspective when you're on the property. Plus, we're kind of proud of it, too, and want to show it off a little bit. But, and you're welcome anytime. So like I said, I've reached out multiple times, even talked to Murray a little bit about it, how do we get you guys out there, because I think you need to see the property. You need to hear from us. There is a lot of documents, and I keep hearing that today as almost a negative. If I could tell you the time and the experts and the resumes of the people that have gone into putting these documents together, it's disheartening when they haven't been read. It really is, I'll just be honest with you. Time is a constraint, and I know, and I'm totally respectful of the fact that you guys have other things that you do, this isn't your whole life, and it is a lot of information. We've really wanted to make sure and to be in a position where you guys were comfortable to be able to vote on this. I'm not quite sure what we need to do in that respect. We've talked about fire today, and I can't, I was not here during the fire. My colleague was here during the last fire. Randy's lived through all of them, our ranch manager. I've heard the stories, but again, I've got great compassion for that, and I can only imagine what that trauma's like. I watched the Paradise movie a couple times, and I understand and have a good idea. When we purchased this property, first thing we did, Mike Wink's still here, Mike Will Test, Mike was one of our greatest allies. We reached out to Mike and said, listen, we need Cal Fire, we want the best of the best, we want this to be the very safest community in the state of California. That's our goal. That's our goal. Because we're not gonna be successful at our property if it's gonna be burned. How do we do that? We hired fire scientists at UC Berkeley. They're disaster people. These, these are PhDs and that's all they work on. We have, there's a report that came out recently, that was out recently, when I said three months ago, that was asked by the CBD to do so. And it was a great model that modeled, and it's where you saw some of the exhibits that Ann Lee had showed. But those represent, we went through and said, is this property today, is it safer in its current state or is it safer in a developed state? And unequivocally, the report, I encourage you to read it. I would love to get our fire scientists to meet with you guys and to walk you through that. It is, there's a lot of information, a lot of, it's very, very technical. And I have to admit, I don't understand all of it. I ask a lot of questions. But what that report did unequivocally test out was the property in its developed stage is much safer, not only for our property, but for the community, for Hidden Valley, for Middletown, because we can stop fires there. Because again, a lot of the measures, the wildfire mitigation measures, we're spending the money, millions of dollars, that we're giving to the county to build an emergency response center. It's not just for our project. There's a hole in the gap. There's a, there's a deficiency in that region of Lake County right now from Cal Fire's perspective. So we've worked with South Lake Fire. We'll build a fire station, our expense. We'll equip it, our expense. We'll man it, our expense. Those are the things, again, when we went to do, we know we can't sell real estate unless, again, our main objective is we want to be the new gold standard for the state of California. We want to be the platinum standard. We went to the Attorney General's office and we said the same thing to them. Help us. And they did. They actually, it was a collaborative, they said, these are in higher fire brown. We want these to be more clustered. We want these residential lots and here's the reasons why. It was actually, it was a good exercise and there was a lot that good came out of it. But we know that we can't continue to just stall projects like this. They, they don't come along every day. And, and people can't just sit around and just wait and wait and wait and to make sure that we've got everything figured out. But we can continue the collaboration. I think Mike, again, I'm not putting Mike on the spot because I know he's Cal Fire and there's only certain things he can represent. But I can tell you, and if he was able to attest, he would say, we've been in close contact, him day one, and we are continuing to. We're looking at new technologies all the time. Again, how you detect it, because we know that early detection is how you, early ignitions, that's your early extinguish, right? The road widening, again, that's a major cost to a project. There's not another project in California that I'm aware of that has this many design measures, mitigation measures and design measures implemented into it. There are two documents and I encourage you to read both of them. And there, one of them is our wildfire protection plan and the other one is our wildfire risk assessment. And again, the risk assessment is the one that the UC Berkeley, Cal Fire, on and on and on. We have a ton of experts. Their resumes are in that document. It's about that thick. But again, it was modeled. And we do believe that with this project, with it, with it being developed, is gonna help wildfire prevention in Lake County and not promote it. Report tells, that's not my opinion. I'm not just standing here today, I'm telling you, because I believe it, because I've read the documents. I've lived it. And haven't lived the fires, again, so the trauma, I understand. Monica, other people that have spoken, I, I haven't walked in those shoes, but I feel for you. Our goal from day one has been collaboration. Honestly, I can reach out to you and anybody, and I have been, but you have to reciprocate. You gotta say, let's sit down, let's have, let's have a real conversation. And I've been trying to do that. I've been in this community. I came back a year ago and I'm here, I'm here most of the time, at least fifty percent of the time. When I'm here, I'm constantly reaching out to different people in the community, getting involved in the Chamber of Commerce and others and saying, let's get the community people here so we can hear them. Did I hear everybody? No, I didn't. And I wish I'd maybe done a better job of that. But again, what I would really love for you to do is we're not gonna cure all the wildfire problems. There's a decision I think that the county has to make. Do you want any more development or are we just gonna leave it like it is? And if it is, then embrace and allow us to help you, to guide everybody, to say, this is what we need to do. But we don't have unlimited funds. I don't know anybody that is. With the contributions we've made, with the things that we've done to this particular point, we've given. Let's talk about the well for a minute. We have a well source. Who would give up a well? We did. Calioma Water District, you guys need water? Yes, okay, that's yours. That's another source for your people in Middletown. We're not taking. And the reciprocate, the part of that agreement then is if we ever need water, then if Calioma Water District has plenty of it, they'll send us water. We still have to build a pipeline down Butts Canyon, which is over ten million dollars. Probably never gonna happen. But do you want to, when you've got millions and hundreds of millions of dollars invested, do you wanna just walk away from a source? Let's talk about the housing in Middletown for just a moment. That property in Middletown was bought, was purchased because we thought it was the right thing. We thought it would help Middletown, downtown Middletown, by bringing new people vibrant and help to vibrant, to, to revitalize the downtown area, the restaurants, the coffee shops and so forth. Again, that was by design. Was it the right choice, hearing now? I mean, this was made years ago. Hearing now, maybe not. Maybe it wasn't the right choice, maybe it's still not. We're here, we're here and I've told anybody that's been willing to meet with me or meet with us, it's not me, it's a team of people. And I'm speaking for my entire team. But we're, we're here to embrace, we wanna be a good neighbor. We're not the developer that just wants to come in and snowball and try to throw things at everybody and go, okay, now we're gone. We got what we wanted and we're done. No, that is not what we're made out of. That's not who we are. And we wanna really continue to be part of this community. We wanna invest in Lake County. We could've gone anywhere. We could've gone to Wyoming, Montana, you name it. We could've built this resort anywhere. Amount of money that's already been spent and we haven't been able to turn any dirt is outrageous. We could've gone somewhere and, and we would've probably already had this thing built, right? But we're going through the processes and we're going through it right. And we're hiring the best, Acorn. I mean, these, I mean, I can tell you, we got a rock star team. And again, it's a, and I know Monica, you wanted me to be quiet. I see you hitting your button, but I just, I, and I'll, and I'll address your, your, your questions here in just a minute, but I wanted the opportunity and I hope you understand and maybe I, maybe I've earned my opportunity to have a, a seat here, right? With, again, the time that we've invested, this is our lives. And we understand you have lives too. How do we mesh? How do we work together? Are we gonna cure the problem of wildfires? No, they're still gonna come through, right? We're gonna help reduce that and when there is, we wanna help mitigate the damage. It helps us, it helps our adjusting, adjusting, I mean, our adjoining properties. It helps the community and helps everybody. So again, thank you for your time. I am, I have to say, I'm extremely disappointed. I really wanna get this project moving forward, I think.
I wanna interrupt you and just say, don't, don't be disappointed. As far as what you have here, again, is a very committed planning commission. And I think I'm gonna use the old phrase, the cliche of knowledge is power. And unfortunately, because of the, the extensive amount of paperwork, and they're all good reports, so, so don't feel bad that we haven't read them. The thing is, is that I believe this body, and you guys can nod your head or shake or whatever, but I believe what you're hearing us say is that we want the time to be able to read it so that we can make a knowledgeable, you know, decision about the project and/or if we have any questions or a little tweaking that needs to be done. So I think it's just, you know, we, I know, speaking from my point of view, as far as just, please just grant us, be a little patient with us. So I know that you've been in this for a long, long time.
Right.
But we do want to do the right thing. We want to read all these documents.
Right.
You have to understand that some of us just received this huge stack of documents on Friday night.
I do, I, I totally understand. And there might even be a way too, Monica, along that point too. It might even be a workshop. I mean, for you to have to sit down and go through these documents would be a, would be a heavy lift. I mean, it would be a lot to ask. And if there's a way, we could come together, we could bring some of our fire science people with us, the people that helped to put together these reports. I'm not the expert, don't claim to be. But anything that we can do to continue to keep the communication going, because again, like I said, time's not always your friend when it comes to developments. And we wanna just, again, we, I can't stress enough, we wanna be a good neighbor. We're not against anybody. People here today that have spoken against the project, I have no hurt feelings at all for them. They come from, from a different standpoint and a vista and I totally get it and I respect it. But I do think there's a way, again, if, if Lake County wants to grow and it wants to have a development, maybe I'm a little bit biased. I personally don't think there'll ever be another opportunity like this one. I really don't. Low density, we're disturbing less than five percent of our overall property. I don't know of another project like that. Most project developers are just out to make the money and they're gonna cram as much as they can into the footprint of that lot. Ours is not, five percent less. It's a long buildout. These are, all these people aren't gonna be here. We're not gonna crowd your roads. We have done things like, you know, we are gonna, wherever it ends up, okay, our, our workforce housing, those people are, you know, we've already got plans on shuttle buses. I mean, there's been a tremendous amount of planning that's gone into this project. We're not just sitting around waiting on approvals. It's like, we get an approval, and hopefully we will, that we've got an execution plan and we wanna move forward with it. But again, we're here, we wanna be a good neighbor. We wanna embrace everybody, listen to everybody. And unfortunately, we can't please everybody, but at least I think we can have enough that we can agree to disagree. So again, thank you for much, the time. Thank you for allowing me to, to speak. And again, I can't say enough about the county staff. And they have really been phenomenal. And they've worked hard, they've worked their tails off, Laura, Maria and Nicole. So, thank you.
Don't sit down. I think this essentially is the workshop that you described. And I think you stood up to answer a question that Sharon had.
Oh, just the wonderment about the location of the, the workforce and, and you sort of said a little bit, but.
Yeah, I did, I did and I got sidetracked. I apologize. Anyway, so now the workforce housing, again, it was done by design. We, we did think at that moment that putting, again, we'd heard that there was already a density there. There was apartment complex at one time. We have to, in our E I R reports, we have to say, okay, we're gonna have the X-Men employees. Where are you gonna put the employees? Where are you gonna house them? So that was maybe a low lying fruit. Maybe that was the one that we had made that decision on. But as I have told everybody and even our adjoining neighbor to that property, and I've had coffee with them on their back porch, and they've said, we just can't really visit in our backyard. And I go, you know what? I get it. If I'm, if I've been sitting here for forty years too, looking at this view, it's, and not every, things change. We know there's a change. But I get it. And let's talk about that. Because again, maybe there's a shift. Maybe it all happens in this general plan. Maybe I've talked to Monica, maybe we got other property. We don't wanna put them on our, on our land. Can you imagine working there and living there? It's kinda like a compound. We want these people to be vibrant. We want them to get out of the, out of the, off the job, if you will, and to be able to go somewhere else. Whether it's in Hidden Valley, whether it's, we don't want them driving over the hill. We're trying to capture all of our people that are on this side of the hill. As I've told many of you, I've sat at Twenty-Nine Highway in Butts Canyon many, many mornings at seven o'clock and it's nauseating watching the traffic going over the hill. And you know that's an hour commute, that's two hours back and forth for everybody in this area right now to, for work. So when we do talk about the jobs, it's, it's real. But that was part of what we wanna do, we wanna keep them here. We want our workforce to be here and we thought Middletown, downtown was good. We understand from people and I've talked to these folks. We had a conversation last night on the phone and I told them, I said, you know what? Nothing's ever dead certain like Maria even brought up. You know, we've still gotta come in with a tentative plan. We've still gotta come before you with that plan. Somebody's got a better idea or a better option. We don't wanna be in the workforce housing business, that's not us, right? Maybe somebody else will come in and go, we wanna build an apartment complex wherever. Valley Oaks, who knows? And wherever that is, we'd like, sign us up. Because we just have to have somewhere for our employees to stay. That's all we're trying to do is take care of them. And we did think it was a good idea. And I think there's still a lot of people that do think that. I think the business owners and so forth, I've heard, well, they don't live in Middletown. They're coming in from other areas. That may be true, but we still wanna vibrate. We still want people to be successful. We want these small businesses to thrive and we want new businesses to come in. And I don't think there's anybody that's opposed to that. And I know you guys aren't, and ladies, I apologize. But I know you're not, you're not opposed to that and that's what you want too. So I hope I answered that question.
Uh, yes, we, excuse me, will this be provided for the, for the, those, those employees?
I'm sorry?
Is it provided for them?
No.
They need, they will?
They will, they will be renting.
Okay.
From us. And, and we heard too, that it's just for our employees. It's not restricted to our employees.
Oh.
We have to have somewhere to say, here's, here it is. Here's where these people need to stay. We need a place to stay. It's, who knows where these people are gonna be? I hope there's some houses that are available in Hidden Valley that we can buy as well. And other areas, I don't wanna, I shouldn't, you know, saying that too loud because people are gonna start jacking their houses prices up. But again, this, we're looking three years down the road. We really won't have that workforce housing here. We won't open the first piece of this development for three years. I mean, it takes a year to build the infrastructure. Even if we got approvals now, we can't start till next year before the moratoriums and so forth and get all of our permits and all that. And it's a year of infrastructure. You want them to start building the buildings till twenty-seven and then twenty-eight, twenty-nine is when we'd open. So we have a lot of time. This is not just all of a sudden, I wish it was, but it's not. It takes so much time and so much effort. And as far as the construction, most of the construction people have their own fifth wheels. We've got a place for them on our property, for them to hook up their RVs or whatever they have. And, and the construction people know how to, they, they take care of themselves, right? And, but again, I think building materials, whatever it is, we are stressing by local, by local, by local. That's kind of been our, our mantra from kinda day one is we really want, it's not just idle words. We're really, really want our people to be as much as they can in Lake County and try to help this community. We're part of it. We made a big investment here. And you talking about property values? I wish I owned a home around here. I'm trying to buy, if I had money, I would buy land all around this development because it's just gonna increase in value. Your homes are gonna increase in value. But anyway, I'm, I'm probably off track, no squirrel.
Sorry, thank you. I actually thought it was for employees only so that, good clarification. It's just an offer available.
It's an offer available. And probably it'll be probably mostly occupied by our people, but.
Thank you.
We, we can't force that.
I have another very basic question. I just wanna make sure I understand what's going on here. You're not just subdividing the property. You are actually going to be financing the construction of everything.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If no one has, no one else has any questions, maybe I can go to my next question? Okay.
You want me to sit down?
Maybe not. The project area is located within a rural area of the county. This is quoting from the staff document with, that I think is quoting the E I R, with slopes that range from approximately twenty percent to greater than thirty percent. So are we building on vertical slopes? I mean, the language is not clear. I don't know if this is a question for Anna.
The slopes that range in those degrees are typically found in rural lands. So that would be an apt description, not necessarily that the development is.
But it, it doesn't describe it at all. It says from twenty percent to greater than thirty percent. So it's unlimited. Are we allowing construction on vertical slopes?
We currently have requirements for residential development driveways to be at no greater than sixteen percent slope, but we do not have a limit on where residential homes can be placed. If you think about Buckingham, some of them are sort of like off of some pretty steep lands. So we do not have anything in our zoning ordinance that would say, don't build on a forty-five degree slope. But it tends to be more challenging and more expensive.
Okay, so there are no limits?
I did, also, looking at the specific plan of design, I didn't see anything, any pictures or elevations that would exhibit something hanging on the cliff.
So on our tour, which was lovely, we did drive and it was just elegant. The way that we were able to drive along, well, Randy was able to drive the truck until we got a flat tire, along some, some roads that were on very steep slopes and he very handily had his phone with a map on it showing us and I could see that there was going to be a home on this very steep slope. So I'm concerned about it, that's all.[1768.38] I, I don't, I'm not a construction expert, I'm just wondering if building or planning department is aware of that. Moving on, this is probably a question for staff. There was a reference to tribal consultation, and I'm, I understand that some tribal consultation occurred, and I'm wondering what, if any concerns were raised.
Yeah, and we had tribal consultation, and they were concerned with some things that got addressed in that consultation, I can't remember right now what they were, but they had had consultation under the 2020 EIR, so this was for, under the partially revised EIR. So it was closed that day.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions for right now.
Are there any further questions from the commission, or a consensus on whether we move the meeting or the, the hearing to another date?
I would, I would personally like to continue it so that I can finish digesting the material. I'd like to comment that I did learn a lot today. I came into here, into this meeting without any idea in my head, whether I was going to support it or not support it, and I have a much clearer idea now. I feel that this is a project that I could, I could support, if I see what I need to see in the documents that I need to read. And I apologize that I haven't read them all yet. I do have dogs that I have to take care of at home, and a pair of orchard, and, so I would like to continue it.
I would welcome a little more time, and I would love to have a tour. I'm moving to continue it to a date that Maria suggests.
May I ask a question first before we, before we do that? I did, looking at the Middletown area plan, and this is a question for staff, in regard to the 2010 Middletown area plan, we did talk about this area, and I'll just read directly from here, it says, this is, of course, in regard to the preservation of, of farmland. And of course, this, in the Middletown area plan, which I was part of those meetings back in 2010, and the approval of, of this plan. But the, says that the land use mapping for this area acts as a guide, which allows the future development of up to roughly 800 dwelling units from the approximately 16,000 acre property to be concentrated into smaller areas, which are more appropriate for residential development. Remaining undeveloped areas will be preserved for further development by being rezoned to be frozen. So I know that many things have changed, and that's one of the things that I'd like to spend a little bit more time looking at also, because of course, as somebody had mentioned earlier, that the farm, farm mapping has changed as well, and, you know, again, many things have changed since 2010, but be frozen, can you speak to that?
Sure. We do have articles, an article in our zoning ordinance regarding a density overlay. You'll typically see this overlay applied where the community in their area plans has designated a higher level of density than what would normally be seen in rural lands, rural residential. And so sometimes you'll click on a, like, when you get to one of those parcels and you click on the ARCGIS, it'll say, it'll, it'll have a B3 with parentheses than either a five acre or a 2.5 acre most often. Just hang in there with me, it's really hard to, I have to repeat myself to staff all the time. So, so far, I'm the only one in the department has ever seen this stuff. When it comes to subdivision, an actual subdivision of a property that is within this special density overlay, they are able to go, they are able to create a parcel to that smallest, to the, to that amount that, or the, that minimum parcel level that's in the parentheses, so 2.5 acres or five acres. When they take advantage of that land subdivision, that is when the land switches over to be frozen, which means no further subdivision is permitted, because it's, it's reached the community's vision for what could be allowed, and that's it. So it's just an indication that the community visioning process did not include multiple 2.5 acres. They're not rezoning it to something that would allow for like SR, like a one to three acre parcel. They, they're saying, this is a special circumstance right here, and we'll let you go this far and then be frozen. The way that that would be accomplished similarly in this project is that you have your subdivision maps. They're, they're tentative, approved in, sort of in concept by the planning commission, and then realized through recordation by the board of supervisors. Any change to those maps or further subdivision would also launch a new subdivision, or a new, a new subdivision process. So it would not be an easy or quick process. Additionally, you would have your minimum acreage defined, as defined in Article 14, too. So there are those obstacles to further subdivision.
So I will second Miley's motion.
We have a motion and a second to move the meeting, or move the hearing to a, to a, could be a date certain or a date uncertain? To a date certain?
Time date certain, please, I have a few options for the commission. One is next Friday, August 1st.
Oh. Oh, we're changing days.
Because this would technically be a special meeting of the planning commission, yeah.
Uh, next Friday?
Next Friday is one. I'm just going off of availability for the board chambers, because I'm assuming we'll still have significant public interest that would be larger than conference room C.
So I don't have a calendar here, what's the date on Friday?
August 1st.
Yeah, that's not a good day for me.
The next ones are that following week, Monday, August 4th, Thursday, August 7th, or Friday, August 8th.
I think, and I don't have my calendar, but I think Monday, August 4th works for me, or the Friday.
Which Friday?
Uh, the second Friday, not the, not August 1st.
That would be Monday, August 4th, Thursday, August 7th, or Friday, August 8th.
7th doesn't sound good, for some reason.
My calendar already says that we have a planning commission meeting on August 7th.
That would be incorrect.
Not the first time.
We have planning commission meetings on the 2nd and 4th Thursdays.
Let's, why don't we ask everyone if the 4th would work?
Okay, good.
Does the Monday, August 4th work for the commission? All in favor?
Yes.
I have an appointment on the 4th. I have an appointment on the 4th, it's already scheduled.
Okay. How about August 8th, the Friday?
That works for me.
That works for me.
I can do that.
I'm fine on the 8th.
Okay. Oh, alrighty, August 8th.
We've come to a consensus on August, Friday, August 8th, to reschedule this
To be continued.
Or to be continued. To continue the planning commission meeting for this item on the 8th, and would that be categorized as a special meeting as well?
Yes.
Special meeting for this item?
9:00.
Uh, time?
9 o'clock.
The time will be at 9:00 AM, and because it is a date certain, there won't be any notifications?
We will not notify as if it were a new hearing. We will publish an agenda for a special meeting.
Good.
Additionally, as the commission, as you go through your, your further review of the documents, when you come up with questions, please email them to Laura, or, no, actually, email them to me, and I will forward them to the applicant. That way, we're going to avoid having a serial meeting outside of public review.
And then you'll include all of us in the questions and answers, so?
Yes, please.
You can please send your questions to staff, so that staff can forward them to the applicant or the applicant's appropriate team member for preparation for the actual hearing that you've continued this item to. So you wouldn't be receiving your answers, it wouldn't be a communication or a back and forth between now and the next meeting. You would get your answers at the next meeting.
So if three of us had the same question, we'd ask it three times and not know if it was answered?
Correct.
And the reason is, I think, because it's a public meeting.
Correct. This item is before you, it's an open item, you've continued it to another day, a date and time certain. So any, any, any evidence that you may receive, which would be, include answers to your questions, would need to be done, would need to be provided at an, at an open meeting. So it couldn't happen as communications through emails.
And so what would you recommend, your recommendations also be in regard to any site visits that happen from between now and then?
So you may attend a site visit. The same Brown Act rules apply, however, in your visit, don't discuss the item, don't form an opinion, don't discuss anything that might help you form an opinion, you are simply there to view. Be very cautious as attending, any, any, make sure that there's no more than any, than two of you there at any given time, so that you don't inadvertently create a meeting. So you can, amongst yourselves, discuss administration, or you can work through staff if it will work out better for you, to say, look, I'm available this time on these days, and then, and work that through, and then staff can, can make sure that everybody is attending at a different time, who wants to attend and, and receive a tour, but that no more than two of you are there at any given time.
Back to the motion, if it's appropriate, I would like to know whether the applicant would be available on August 8th. So I'm moving that we continue the meeting until August 8th at 9:00 AM.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None, and the motion passes. Alright, well, thank you very much. We will continue our meeting to our item number seven, non-timed items. Don't believe we have any.
We have no non-timed items.
No non-timed items. Item number eight, department update.
I have no department update today.
No update. That leaves us with one last thing, and that is to adjourn the meeting today at 2:08 PM.
Wait, we're, we're still in a meeting. Yeah.
Meeting has been adjourned.
Okay, now you're free.
Hey Fletcher.
Now you can do it Fletcher.
My pleasure.